Twenty-sixth meeting, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Laborman?
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we've got some exciting work to talk about. We're going to hear about the recommendations from our Behavioral Health Task Force. So, who's going to start? Haley, okay, come on up, and then Sarah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you guys hear me okay? All right, I don't get up here too often. So, I am very, very happy to be here today. As you might remember, in January, with your support, we launched the Montgomery County Behavioral Health Task Force. This was in collaboration with the Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association. The task force is comprised of healthcare providers, leaders, and community partners, and was established with the goal of developing solutions across our behavioral health system. I'm excited to be here today to introduce the Behavioral Health Task Force's final recommendations. Over the past eight months, we've been meeting monthly, and we've been really looking at how we can have a better understanding of the issues each sector faces when it comes to the Behavioral Health Continuum. We looked at input from frontline staff and studied data to develop a more holistic approach when it comes to our behavioral health landscape and our community needs. The recommendations shared with you today highlight the collaboration and investment across our behavioral health system leaders. However, sharing the recommendations will not be the final step. We'll still have a lot of work to do to ensure that our behavioral health system is supported, whether that be our healthcare providers, judicial system, social services, or treatment centers. So now, I'd like to introduce Sarah Hockenbrock, President and CEO of the Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association, who will provide an overview of the Montgomery County Behavioral Health Task Force's recommendations and next steps.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Haley. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you and joining you today to present our priority recommendations from the Behavioral Health Task Force. The recommendations fall into five categories that are shared to better serve the needs of our Montgomery County residents. In total, we developed 28 recommendations spanning five categories, including oversight and leadership, access in the care continuum, data and technology, workforce, and advocacy and public awareness. Today, we are going to highlight the priority recommendations as identified by the task force members. The first recommendation in oversight and leadership encourages the formalization of the Behavioral Health Task Force's approach and operations. Ensuring that there is collaboration between leadership, driven by looking at the same aggregate county-level data, is essential to driving change and improving the quality of care and interactions for individuals, as well as those who serve their needs. Currently, we do not have a full and complete picture of how our Montgomery County is serving these individuals because none of the data sets tie together to give us a 360-degree view of every interaction that an individual might encounter. We believe that there is significant and positive progress available to us as a community by developing that shared vision and viewpoint from a data perspective and aligning that with a shared strategic plan that can be signed off and adopted by agency leadership and then incorporated into every organization's strategic plan. Secondarily, but related, is that need for that county-wide performance indicator dashboard. If we are only looking at the needs and challenges and opportunities through the lens of one industry sector, we cannot see the whole picture of what is truly happening as we serve these individuals and help them advance in their well-being journey. The priority recommendations for access in the care continuum tie back to a very significant challenge this community has faced for the last 15 years. And by far, the largest number of recommendations are tied to overall access in our care continuum. But it has been 15 years since the state of Ohio closed Twin Valley Behavioral Health, which was our region's state psychiatric facility. Upon that closure, our region was given assurances that our patients would be able to be transferred to facilities in Toledo, Columbus, and Cincinnati. That process has never worked smoothly to serve the needs of our region or the individuals in our care, and our community members are paying that price. Through the course of our task force discussions, as well as individual meetings with stakeholders, it has been made clear that the process to transfer patients to the state psychiatric facilities is so broken that organizations are no longer tracking or documenting the series of failed attempts to transfer patients to those facilities. Our region deserves better, and we will develop a proposal to articulate our needs and expectations clearly to Governor DeWine, Director Chris, and our region's legislative delegation. We have waited 15 years for the state of Ohio to help us fill this gap and hole in our community, and that wait ends with the launch of the Behavioral Health Task Force recommendations. Of critical importance is addressing the significant the significant behavioral health needs of our individuals in the Montgomery County Jail. That announcement was made last week, and while that investment is important, we also need to look at the interim period between now and when that facility comes online for the additional beds to ensure that we have a plan in the interim to serve those individuals' needs. The priority recommendations to data and technology are items that we've alluded to already, and we have a significant opportunity to invest in the connectivity and infrastructure that we use to drive data decisions about what type of care, where that care is located, and how our behavioral health needs are addressed. We have essentially two key aspects to consider when we are thinking about data. One is what I alluded to with the oversight and leadership recommendations. The aggregate data for all partners to be able to drive policy change, align strategy, and secure programmatic, as well as capital funding investments, is critical for our region to advance. As well as individually, the data connectivity between partner organizations so that an individual's care plan can be followed and that there will be no wrong door for an individual preventing them from continuing their well-being or recovery. Many of the most challenging decisions right now regarding how to serve the needs of our community are tied to holistic workforce conversations across the Behavioral Health Continuum. Every agency, organization, and partner is struggling to find and retain the workforce needed to serve this population. Again, we need to develop solutions by using the data from all partners and overlaying that with the academic programs in our region to better understand how we need to prepare to meet the needs of today and tomorrow. One of the clinical specialties that we rely on incredibly in this region is psychiatry. And prior to COVID-19, we already knew that there was a gap in terms of the demand for services and the available psychiatric clinicians in this region. That demand is continuing to increase. Psychiatry is critical to the model of care that allows us to use other licensed individuals under their supervision, and we need to expand the number of placements at Wright State University Boonshoff School of Medicine so that we can do everything that we can to keep them here in this region for practicing psychiatric care in the future. We are facing a national shortage for psychiatry in the coming years, and now is the time to develop the tools and models to be ready to serve our communities when that shortage arrives. Finally, advocacy and public awareness. The state and federal government are preparing to make new investments through a variety of funding streams. We must ensure that Montgomery County and our collaborative partnerships are ready and in the queue to match local investments to access those state funds and federal funds in order to achieve our shared vision. If we do so in partnership with one another, we will transform that delivery and we will just transform the delivery of behavioral health services in our region. And we must be prepared to advocate for the needs of our residents together. Developing a shared county and regional advocacy agenda for behavioral health is critical to our shared success. Our leaders and policymakers must know that we are working as one team to better serve individuals on their journey in behavioral health. Again, access to state psychiatric hospital placements is critical to ensuring that the right level of care is provided at the right location at the right time. We must also address the inadequacy of reimbursement for behavioral health services, which impacts every provider in their ability to expand services, as well as retain the necessary high-performing staff. And there is an opportunity to be ready for expanding outpatient services, which is critically important to helping individuals receive support, care, and treatment before they are in a crisis. And as Haley alluded to, as we enter the fall, there is still work to be done. In preparation for 2024, we will transition the list of recommendations into an actionable implementation plan. That will allow us to look at the strategic actions needed for a recommendation to come into fruition, understanding how organizations in the community are equipped to facilitate, lead, or support that work, and develop cost estimates for future budget conversations. From an education perspective, we are returning some time to our provider partners, particularly in the healthcare space, where we provide continuing education for them and their staff in behavioral health, focused on creating access to comprehensive, high-quality behavioral health care services. And of course, we will engage individuals with lived experience and their loved ones to learn more about their experience with the Behavioral Health Continuum in our community. Thank you for the opportunity to work with all of you, as well as your county staff and my colleague Haley Coretta. She has been a phenomenal representative of Montgomery County. And now, I would like to introduce CJ Kosteca, the Associate Chief Nursing Officer for Miami Valley Hospital.
Thanks, Sarah. Wow, it seems like it's been years ago since I saw you, but it's only been a short eight months ago that I came to you. And I felt like at that point in time, I was in a mode of desperation and a lack of hope. Today, I come to you after being a part of this Behavioral Task Force with a renewed spirit and a mindset that there is hope. I have been challenged by some of my peers that are on this task force to look at what we're doing differently. I've built relationships with individuals from the court system, from our jails, from the Adamus Board, and everything that we have come back to was about the patient. How do we do things differently? How do we work differently and collaborate together? Because that is the only reason that we are here, right, is for our community, for our patients. It's our duty, obligation. It is what I went to nursing for, was to care for our patients in our community. And I firmly believe that, and I believe after this task force, there is renewed hope. I know Sarah alluded to a couple of things that are near and dear to my heart is about the violence that we were experiencing on the behavioral health unit. We're still experiencing that. But as I know that as we move down through one of these recommendations, I really feel we're going in the right direction, and our patients are going to get the level of care that they need. And I just want to say thank you for your time and for your support and your willingness to help support this endeavor, and most importantly, our patients in our community. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would also like to introduce Stephen O'Neill with Kettering Health.
Hello.
Hello.
Stephen O'Neill, Chief Nursing Officer, Kettering Health, Miami's Burke, and I'm the Executive Oversees Kettering Health Behavioral Medical Center. So, thank you. It wasn't without your support that this didn't get started. The great opportunity I've had to work, of course, with Haley and Sarah is amazing. But also, what we found was the opportunity to start linking hands across competitive lines. My colleagues CJ and I have the opportunity to spend time together to understand that we have so many things and similar challenges, but also with our court systems and our legal system. In order to get anywhere, if you're a backpacker or a traveler, you must first know where you start. We finally figured out where we're starting from. As we dug, we kept digging deeper to realize that our system is broken. This is a highly vulnerable part of our population and one that our court systems are taking care of, but aren't designed to take care of. The mental health environment is one that is very sensitive, and it is one that, for lack of any direction, has been left behind. Your support in this process has allowed us to take time, to focus in, to determine where do we need to go from here, and to develop a plan that can start to take care of that population that has been left behind for so long. It wouldn't have been without having, eight months ago, come to this room and your support through funding, but also giving us the bandwidth to do it. So, I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments?
Thank you, thank you, thank you for all of you working together. And you can see it's so important to our community, so thank you, and I'm looking forward to the next steps. And I know, Commissioner Rice, you've been very involved in going to the meetings, and I think I see Judge David Brannon sitting back there. Thank you, Judge Brannon. You've been very much an instrumental part of this, so thank you. Thank all of you. Couldn't have done this without you. Thank you.
I would definitely, I did observe and witness and participate. I don't think I was able to attend every meeting, but I think I only missed one. And so, I can say firsthand that the room probably is met probably more people than are in this room today were in every meeting. And the true dedication to the most vulnerable population was palpable in every meeting. I was in a lot of the, what do I always say, activities where you got into deeper discussions and, you know, just reinforced that I hope we're truly all on the same page. I think we all believed we were, but by having that shared experience, and we're all in the same boat, and we want the same thing. We want our, these citizens to have the bright future they deserve with the right treatment, with the right medications, with the right options. There will be a better future for them, their families, but most importantly, our entire community because it is truly not having them is doing so much harm. And I think that we will be a stronger voice. I know everyone's been advocating. It's not that we haven't advocated. But I think if we're all, I believe we will be more on the same page, more clear in what our priorities are, and really holding our representatives accountable to help us find solutions. We're not unique. When we go to NACO and other conferences, this is across the country. It's not unique to Ohio. But that's no excuse for us not to find the best possible solutions right here for our community. And there are other ideas in other communities that we can try to emulate. But my hat's off to every individual that was part of that task force, every individual who wasn't there, but who responded to the survey with their honest critiques and their insights. Because I know people who are on the front line of this issue know better than the rest of us. Not only the harm that it's doing, but what's really, really needed. And I'm excited as I, as our last session, you know, to me, this is just the beginning. And I hope that these relationships will only grow stronger because there is so much work to be done. We need more people in this space helping our citizens build a better future. So, thank you. I think we feel really good about the investment that we made and that we can step into this space and really find a brighter future for our community. So, it was an honor to even observe and listen and be able to witness this collaboration become, is taking it up a different level. I always say that we collaborate in this community, but when you're around a crisis, there's something that comes to the forefront. I think it brings out the best in all of us, and we're not there. We're not saying we've achieved anything yet, but I feel very much stronger that we are on our way and that whatever obstacles come our way, together, we can figure it out. And we will be a stronger community in the mental health space, both in this Montgomery County, in this region, but the state of Ohio in the years to come because nothing is going to stop us from going forward. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. You know, Haley, when you, it is a crisis, and it's a national crisis, as Carolyn said. It's a public health crisis. And we know it was bad before the pandemic, and now, everything from our youngest babies to our senior citizens, it's affecting everyone. And so, I know when, it was last year before we pulled everybody together, we talked about this. And it's like, we have so many great things going on. So, that wasn't, this wasn't done to say that, well, so-and-so isn't doing this, and they're not doing this. No, this was collaboration. And we know in this community, whenever we collaborate, do collective impact around something so important, we did it around homelessness. We've done it around so many things, food, offenders. Yeah, I mean, just, yeah, drug, right, code. So, I thank all of you that are in here who are, have been committed to this and will continue to be committed to it. We all know somebody that's affected by mental health issues, and it's not their fault. We know that. And so, as we look at next steps, and we're going to be innovative as a community, I know we will be. But Sarah, one of the things that came to mind when you said next steps, and when we look at what we are going to do at the jail, and we're excited about that, but what are we going to do at StopGaps? So, hopefully, that smart minds can come together around that, and we can figure out a way to make sure that everybody that comes in there is getting the treatment they need and that they're, not only will they be safe, but our corrections officers and deputies will be safe as well. And that's just one little piece. And, you know, as we look at all the different nonprofits and different organizations that are growing and popping up, let's just make sure that everybody's at that table. And I know you will, and I really want to thank you, Sarah. This was a big lift, and to the team that helped you, thank you as well. And of course, Haley, you're the best. Thank you. So, Michael, do you have anything to add?
I do. Thank you, Commissioners. Haley and Sarah, again, leadership, leadership always counts. Commissioners, thank you for committing the resources to this. It was a big budget lift, so thank you to both our large hospital associations, but also to the smaller providers like Haven and 115 that were at the table. Our goal in this was to hear from the providers. We wanted to hear from the people that treat people. And then, bringing in our court, Judge Brannon, and our sheriff, Rob Streck, into the full conversation, our goal was to hear from everyone at this. I'm excited about what we can put behind the recommendations because I'm looking forward to that continuum. And we have made a commitment to support the recommendations, so we will implement. I'm also excited about where the data and the technology can take us, the work with Ascend. That is the future. And we'll be working with the state, both Medicaid and OMS, and that's going to be a real big lift. But I think if we continue to work together, this will be positive. So, thank you, Sarah and Haley, for your leadership. Thank both of our nursing doctors or doctor nurses, if I didn't get that right, and then all of our providers that were at the table. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, our county engineer, Paul, take it away.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have several resolutions for your approval today. First is Resolution 23-1256 to authorize the county auditor to pay by warrant $93,243.66 to the city of Centerville for permissive tax funds for the 2021 Wilmington bike resurfacing project. 1257 is to revise the promifacy speed limit on Lyons Road from Lyons Ridge Drive to Yankee Street in Washington Township in accordance with Section 4511.21 of the Ohio Revised Code. And then, we have a couple of agreements with American Structure Point, Inc., for design engineering services. The first is 1258 for the Westbrook Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in the city of Brookville in an amount not to exceed $285,373 through December 31st of 2027. And 1259 is for the Crestway Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in the city of Clayton in an amount not to exceed $272,875 through December 31st of 2026.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1260, accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office for High Visibility Enforcement Overtime Program in the amount of $106,720.82. We also have Resolution 1261, authorize a purchase from GeoBuyer Sun Holding LLC, DBA Buyers Ford for three 2023 Ford police interceptive vehicles in an amount not to exceed $139,272 through December 31st, 2023.
I move to approve.
Second.
There is a late item.
Late item.
Okay.
Sure.
And then the late item.
Thank you, Emily. We have a late item, 1292, accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Recovery of Ohio Major Drug Interdiction, Ohio Organized Crime Investigations Commission, in the amount of $121,647.16.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Common Police Court?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Court of Common Pleas and the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 1262, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with alcohol, drug, and addiction and mental health services for the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services for state fiscal year 2024, community allocation guidelines, in the amount of $200,000. We also have Resolution 1263, amend the addendum to the agreement with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, Division of Parole and Community Services.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Probate Court?
Under the Probate Court, we have Resolution 1264, authorize a renewal option with Tiberia Development Group, Inc., for software and services to extend the existing e-filing system in the amount not to exceed $45,320 through August 30th, 2024.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for being here, Judge Brannon. We usually would make you come up here and do your own, but since there's only one, you know. Oh, you're welcome. Juvenile Court?
Hello, Commissioners. Before I read the resolution on behalf of Juvenile Court in response to your comment last meeting, commission meeting, the judges, Judge Wallace and Judge Brunz, and Court Administrator Eric Schaefer appreciates our relationship with the Commissioners and with the county, OMB. And we were just at a state meeting last week, and they heard about some of the turmoil that some of the states have with, what some of the counties have with the courts. So, we appreciate our relationship with you. So, Resolution 23-1265, we recommend that you adopt the budget based on a grant with the Ohio Department of Youth Services for the ongoing operation of the Center for Adolescent Services in the amount of $5,860,541 through June 30th, 2024.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you know, that center is so important, and it's kind of quiet that it's here in Montgomery County, but we're really thankful, and they do a, well, a very difficult job, but they do a good job. So, thank you.
Please convey our thanks to the judges, too. We appreciate the relationship between the court and children's services, so thank you.
Okay, Auditor's Office.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Auditor's Office, we have authorization of purchases through December 31st, 2023. Resolution 1266, New Horizons for the Online SQL Program Training Services in an amount not to exceed $981. Resolution 1267, Tyrilium for Consulting Services for Payroll Department in an amount not to exceed $103,950. And we have one late item, Resolution 1293, authorize an agreement with Ironbow for the Cyber Security Solution Project in an amount not to exceed $835,279.84 through December 31st, 2026, with options to renew.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You know, I just want to point
You know, I just want to point out on 93, it's such a shame that we have to, as, not just us, all over the world has to, has to do this now.
Absolutely, Commissioners. This is actually part of a much larger cybersecurity project that we're going to do. When it's all said and done with the renewals, with the options, we'll probably be closer to a million dollars. But all governments are going to have to make this investment.
They're being attacked, yeah.
We're fortunate that we've got ARP dollars that allow us to do this right now, and we can set the stage. So, thank you.
Okay, where are we? Oh, we're to Michael.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the county administrator, under the clerk of the commission, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on September 19th, 2023. Resolution 1268, approval of bills. Resolution 1269, approval of traveling expenses. Resolution 1270, approval of personnel actions. All three of those lists are available in the clerk's office.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services, Tyler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have five resolutions for your consideration today, beginning with 1271. This resolution authorizes a master, a master solutions agreement with Central Square Technologies LLC for ongoing utility billing, software, and upgrades for the Environmental Services Department. Resolution 1272, amends Resolution Number 23-1171, which authorized a City of Dayton parking agreement for the Business Services Department by adding $1,500 for a revised total of $5,100. 1273 adopts revisions to the purchasing policy and procedures established by Resolution 80-988, increasing the competitive bidding threshold to $75,000. Resolution 1274 authorizes the purchase of a sterile conveyor dishwasher and insulation services from SS Kemping Company and LLC for the Stillwater Center in an amount not to exceed $70,050. And last is Resolution 1275. This resolution is to solicit requests for qualifications for professional design services for the jail mental health detox and behavioral health units project.
Commissioners, before you approve, Tyler, you want to walk us through the set of next steps as it relates to the new unit that we're building in the jail?
Absolutely. So this Friday, a request for qualifications for design will be released to the public. It will be open for a period of time. Various architectural firms will submit for that. Once that's, once we collect those, we will select a designer for the jail. This project will be delivered using a construction manager at risk model. So soon after we bring the designer onboard, we will release another RFQ for construction services from our construction manager at risk. And then those two entities will work together to design and put together a construction plan for the jail. We would expect a design to be completed sometime in the latter part of next year. And then once we complete that, we'll have a good idea of how long the construction timeline will be.
Great, thank you.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And on 74, I just wanted to say, that is one expensive dishwasher, however, we know that everything at Stillwater is expensive.
Yes.
It's 24 hours that dishwasher's going, so.
And it's for 94 to 98 of our residents.
I know.
That's a lot of people.
That's a lot of people, yeah. Everything costs a lot. All right. Environmental Services, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 1276, amend the Environmental Services Municipal and Industrial Pretreatment Program, local limits for the Western Regional Water Reclamation Facility. The next five are to amend agreements. Resolution 1277 with CG Construction and Utilities, Inc. for construction of the Regent Water Main Replacement Project by adding $68,680.92 to the original amount for a revised total 1278 with Black and Beach Corp. for the preparation of detailed construction plans and specifications for the Eastern Standby Generator Replacement Project by adding $129,942 to the original amount for a revised total of $723,396 and extending the term through December 31st, 2024. 1279 with Milcon Concrete, Inc. for the Stop Eight Lift Station and Forest Main Replacement Project by adding $3,051.34 to the original amount for a revised total of $599,331.34. 1280 with Double J Construction Incorporated for construction of the Dellwood Estates Water Main Replacement Project by deducting $39,415.94 from the original amount for a revised total of $682,262.6. And 1281 with AMG Incorporated for preparation of detailed construction plans and specifications for the compliance project arc flash assessment by adding $55,267.62 to the original amount for a revised total of $628,152.97. And the last four are to issue renewed authorizations to discharge wastewater permits to significant industrial users discharging to the Western Regional Water Reclamation Facility. 1282 with Fui Out Glass America. 1283 with Violia ES Technical Services. 1284 with West, West Carrollton Paper. And 1285 with Valley Core Environmental Services.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services, Jerry.
Yes, we have a resolution under Human Services Plan Development, Resolution 23-1286, submit a consolidated application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the OH 505 Dayton Kettering Montgomery County Continuum of Care in an amount of $13,913,99. And this is our plan that supports our homeless solutions continuum of services within our community, so we're very excited to submit the plan and application.
Thank you.
We also have a late agenda item, which is under the Department of Job and Family Services, Resolution 23-1294, which authorizes the advertisement and opening of a 30-day public comment period for the proposed federal fiscal year 2024, 2025, Prevention, Retention, and Contingency, or PRC, plan through October 31st of 2025.
I move for approval, and, and I must just say, with my work on the Homeless Solutions Policy Board, a lot of, lot of, lot of work goes into each of those, so hats off always to everyone involved for their years and years of passion for this issue and determination to find solutions.
And it's one of those things, 20 years ago, we looked at it as a community, and said we need to eliminate chronic homelessness in our county, and.
We're still working at it, but.
Still working at it, but it sure is a big difference when you look at other metro counties throughout, not just Ohio, but around the country, we're not going fake wood. We're doing all right, so thank you. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business Solutions, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Business Services, I have three resolutions for you. First two, 1287, authorize an agreement with Jennifer Kotush to provide veterinary services for the Animal Resource Center in amount not to exceed $49,900 through December 31st, 2024. 1288, authorize an interagency agreement with the Office of Strategic Initiatives for Justice Web Interactions and Reports for the Animal Resource Center through December 31st, 2033. And the last one, under Community Economic Development, 1289, authorize the assignment of all documents from county court development to county corp. as related to housing development action grants.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
1289, that's, that's big. I knew it was coming, but it's interesting that, that, for that change. And then the other one is, the vet services, is Jennifer additional?
No, you might remember she was a full-time vet at the ARC. She has since moved on, but she's still providing consultant services and licensure for the animal resource.
We're still looking for another vet.
That is correct.
Anybody knows any veterinarians out there? Call Chris. Okay. Did we move in second? Yes, we did. Under the county commissioners, we have 23, 1290, and that is to appoint Grady Mullins to the Greater Dayton Regional Transit Authority Board of Trustees through September 29th, 2026. And 1291 is to reappoint Sharon White, still seems so weird to call her that, Sharon White to the Greater Dayton Regional Transit Authority Board of Trustees for a three-year term ending September 29th, 2026.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do have several citizens signed up to speak. Mr. Feaster, we're going to start with you, why don't you come on up?
Once again, I, you know, I'm, I'm on this fourth, East Fourth Street in Jefferson Downtown Dayton, Ohio. You know, I could come up every week and speak about this here, you know, because this problem been going on for decades. I came to Dayton, Ohio in 1999, and it was a problem down here on 3rd and Main, and it's still a problem. It took two shootings, since the last time I came to talk, two people to get shot before they put some police down there for one day. One day they flooded downtown with police officers, and they put up some more cameras. Cameras ain't going to deter them kids out there from fighting, shooting dice, creating havoc. They don't care nothing about them cameras. But I'm, I'm, the question I'm asking you, Commissioners, city, Mary, all them old people, what is y'all going to do, man, to address this issue? We just going to keep talking, 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 every week, every week, nothing ever get done? What is it going to take, man? How many people got to get beat up? What is it going to take? How many people got to get, they don't have one homicide downtown. What is it going to take, devil limit? What is it going to take? I'll address this to you and Michael Corbin, what is it going to take? Oh, Willie, we got things coming. Always get that on me, and stop it. It always, people started getting their ass whooped. People scared to walk down the street. People come out them rich apartments, $2,000 a month, scared, sneak out, scared to walk across the street. You got 100 kids acting up, smoking dope, shooting dice, everything. It affects everybody. They shouldn't have to go through that. When they get up in the first thing in the morning, open up the window, what do they see? 100 kids out there acting up. Girls swerving, girls squeezing on each other's booties, boys fighting over girls, girls fighting over boys. That's all they see all day long. When they doing their shooting dice, when they doing that, they smoking dope, when underage kids. When is they going to address this here, man? What is it going to take? Another homicide? Michael Corbin? Debbie? You know, because Michael Corbin, you said, things is changing. Thing, what has changed? They pull up a camera. What is a camera? What is that going to stop them kids from acting up? When is they going to put some police officers down there? That's what's happening. When is they going to put, spend some money and put some police, I don't even stay down there, but I'm still concerned. It don't affect me, but I'm still concerned. I'm speaking for the people scared to come down here and speak. I'm speaking for the people that don't even believe in y'all, feel as hopeless to come down and speak to y'all. I'm speaking for them rich, white folks that stay in them apartments, $2,000 a month, that scared to come out at nighttime, scared to come out in the daytime, they scared. You ever been out there devil limit and see when they come out, they ease out there doing eat because they scared. Some of them love to go in the In-N-Out and get something out of their store, right in front of, but they can't. Even they put the bricks up, you seen the bricks up, and they all congregating on the bricks now. So, when is y'all going to do something, man, to address this? I'm talking about the city, the county, the police, the sheriff, all y'all got to be a part of this issue.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Feaster. We've hit the three-minute timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbin.
Thank you. Mr. Feaster, I'm going to address two of your comments, though. You can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you. The first is, week after week after week, you have, you have come here to address both the library security and the downtown Dayton security, neither of which are under the jurisdiction of the county. The county has no authority over the library. The library has a separate board and a separate executive director, and they have their own security apparatus that protects all of the libraries. We have no authority to patrol the libraries. Additionally, downtown Dayton is within the jurisdiction of the city of Dayton. The city of Dayton commission and the city of Dayton manager is who you need to talk to about downtown Dayton policing. We are already, the county, the sheriff, if you will, their purview are the townships and the jail. And we are already stretched thin patrolling the townships and the jail. So my advice to you would be to take this to the Dayton City Commission and also take this to the library board and have those discussions with the appropriate officials. Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, Destiny Brown, come on up. Give us your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Thank you for your time. My name is Destiny Brown. I am at 132nd Street, Dayton, Ohio. I'm a community organizer with Abel Law Firm. I'm also a member of the Montgomery County Jail Coalition. We represent the interests and concerns of over 300 Dayton residents, residents who are impacted by the Montgomery County Jail, citizens who have interest in this space. And as such, we are here to express our concern about the transparency process and the most recent decisions around the county jail. Primarily, some of the concerns that came up in our group is that there, the public interest was a concern despite years of explicit promise to the contrary. Each, each, each one of you, or at least at minimum on a public front, have expressed that there would be a transparent process, that there would be convening of public forums, town halls on the issue, and that our county would take into heat impacted individuals when it came to decisions around the county jail. Consistently, it was said that there was nothing to talk about when there were questions from our group about the updates on what was happening with decisions around the jail. And most recently, we've learned, specifically this past Friday, that obviously some definitive plans were put in place. It is disappointing that it seems that efforts to keep the community under wraps about the, about plans regarding the jail were kept from public interest. Planning was conducted in secret. We didn't know what the planning process was, except that it seems that NAFKIR and GADAH were at the table conducting research and shaping the outcome, in addition to the exclusion from the, the most recent press conference, which allegedly there was space considerations, which is why our coalition cannot be present. The event happened in this room, which, which seemed to be able to accommodate. Tuesday meetings are, are prohibitively inaccessible to a lot of people who are impacted by this issue. The events and the regular meetings are a challenge for people to come to considering their work, and these are everyday citizens who don't have capacity to be here and can express their concerns. The commission spent a great deal of time on routine meetings and executive session. Deliberation does not occur in public. It seems that the Open Meetings Act is not taken seriously. It is understood that this is a vulnerable population when we talk about the Montgomery County Jail, and that many people are suffering from mental health and drug abuse disorders. It's, it's validated, obviously, to take the jail from 12 beds to 112. However, it is still disheartening that it is, that mental health is criminalized and that for many people, they still have to be incarcerated to get, to get the healthcare that they need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's a couple of things in there I'd like to address. I know my county minister doesn't want me to open my mouth, but I'm going to because, okay, you know, and you can sit down, that's fine. First of all, we have, we, we're not building a giant jail. That's what I heard from you guys for a couple of years, don't build a giant jail, don't build a giant jail. We kept telling you, we're looking at this, we don't think we can afford it. We also did share many times, I think probably each one of the four of us, talked about what we were going to do with the sheriff in the jail to provide help for all of our people with mental health issues. And I'm not sure how you wanted us to do anything differently. You asked when, when you're going to make your announcement, when are you going to make your announcement? We made our announcement last Friday. And as you heard Tyler say, we, we don't have a plan yet, we're going to, we're going to, we're going out for bids on Friday. So, while I do appreciate your interest and your concern, we've heard you from the very beginning, and I'm not sure which one of us said we were going to have a town hall, that, that's kind of news to me, but I know you had many town halls about it, and we're not on, we're not on opposite ends here. And I think I've said that to you before as a body, we're on the same, we, we believe the same thing you do. However, what do you think county commissioners could do about criminal However, what do you think county commissioners could do about criminalizing mental health? That comes through the courts. And, and when people, unfortunately, are, are, our judges are sending people there, our police officers, others are bringing people in. We don't make that call. We can't make that criminalization call. So with the lack of places, and, and I think if you were listening to Haley, you heard, or, I'm sorry, Sarah, when we closed Twin Valley, we started to have a crisis in our community. We didn't close Twin Valley, nor could we afford to open up a facility that would house those people. And a lot of the people that were at Twin Valley were there because they were court ordered to be there in the forensic unit. So I know you guys have experts in, in nursing, and we're gonna hear from Yvonne next. But again, we're not on opposite sides with this. However, and I've said this to many of you before, we are not gonna fix a jail, I used to say build a jail, but now we're not gonna fix, repair, whatever word we wanna call it, by a committee. You know, we can't do that. It's not feasible or possible. We have had experts looking at this for several years now, and I know then, no one liked what HDR came up with. Either did we. We didn't either. We never said we're gonna do everything they said. So, again, instead of this constant confrontation and anger at us for trying to do the right thing, I'm really disappointed. You know, I invited many of, all of you to come here, listening from the National Association of Counties. Some of you did come, and I appreciate that. And we talked, and we shared in that. But again, we, we don't do our work and, and especially in building or things like that by committee. The sheriff is the one that knows best what needs to be in the jail. There are experts in this field. So again, I, I really appreciate you all. I appreciate your concern. Everything I've read, there, whether it's Abel, whether it's our public defender's office, on and on and on, you guys, we agree with you. And this is a national crisis. So let's figure out a way to be cordial, work together, and not be adversarial. That's my two cents. Sorry, Michael.
No, no, go ahead. Commissioner, I will, I will wait until after all the jail committees speak, and I'll tie it off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yvonne Carrington, please come up. And you have three minutes.
Good afternoon and thank you for your time. I'm Yvonne Carrington, two fifty Trailwoods Drive, Dayton, Ohio, four five four one five. Three minutes isn't long enough for me to say what I have to say, but I'll do my best. I'm unhappy, the, the thing I'm unhappy, I'm happy that you're doing this with the, with the jail. I've told you that, Debbie. I think it's a great idea, and it's a great use of the ARPA funds. I'm unhappy that, that our group, who's been meeting for almost four years, wasn't included in the, when you, when you met with GADAH and whoever else was in the group. The thing I find about people who are poor or people who are in jail, those of us that aren't poor and aren't in the jail, we come up with ideas about what we think they need, but we never ask them. We never ask the community. I would like to have been a part of that community. I don't see this group that you just had, they're not community, per se. They're all CEOs, presidents, whatever, judges, just like the Justice Committee was. I was the only person from the community who was on the Justice Committee, and that was because I imposed myself as the legal women voters observer. Not because I was asked or anybody else who has any direct experience. And I worked in ERs for twenty-seven years in this town, so I have some experience with these same people that we're talking about. I'm not happy that Navcare is gonna be the, the group that's providing the treatment because they're not providing decent and I'm not saying that the employees aren't great. Nurses will break their backs to make sure that people get what they need. But when you only got three RNs on day shift and you got six hundred plus inmates and they're as sick as all of you said they were when you had your press conference, there's no way that you can provide decent treatment for them. No way. And Navcare is a for-profit. They're in the business to make money, just like insurance companies. They're not. And so I can't see how this is gonna be, I don't know how they're gonna staff this new facility. I was looking through the, the report from the Justice Committee, refreshing my memory, and mental health. One of the things they suggested was to have rotations of interns, residents, and social workers and nurses and whoever else to come through the, the jail as a rotation, as a clinical experience that would help maybe improve the, the appearance of, of working there. I've not heard that ever brought up, so I don't know if it's ever happened or not, but there's just so many other things that, that we could do, and sometimes I think the, the general community ought to be included in these decisions, instead of the people who are in high-power seats, you know, being the only ones who, who look at the data and make the decisions. So I'm out of time, but.
That's okay, Yvonne. When you say the community should be able to make the decision, how do you see that working?
Some members from our group would be a part of the, of, be a part of the decision-making process, to have input. Because when I first took, got on the Justice Committee, I wasn't, I couldn't speak because I was a legal women voters observer, but that's how I got in the room. And eventually, it took a few months, but eventually I was included and, and was put on committees and things like that, but, so people who have direct experience actually working with these folks maybe ought to, or, you know, have interest in, in working with them ought to be able to be included.
I heard you say that the people that were on that committee and then on this most latest GADAH, lack of better word, committee, weren't people from the community and, you know, Rabbi Barsky and Gary Leroy were the chairs. And, I mean, if anybody knows the community, it would be those two people. And so I'm not disputing this with you. You and I have talked about this before, and I just, I agreed at the time that you should have had a voice, and eventually, you're right, you got one. And then with this most recent GADAH, Haley, how many people were on that committee?
Probably close to twenty.
Yeah, yeah. And they were from the community that works the most with the people that need the help, so.
Commissioner, none of them were hospital CEOs.
No.
They were all health providers.
And, yeah.
They were the people who provide direct line behavioral health, health care. And we tasked this committee for that very reason. We had already heard from the public through the Justice Committee. We wanted to hear from those individuals that are treating, including the jail and the probate court. And so we didn't have some high-level people on here. This was, these were people actually, when you think of one fifteen and Woodhaven and Haven and, you know, Samaritan Health, these are people actually given care at the grassroots level. And they were also people from the community. So.
Yeah.
But, but the, but the people in the Justice Committee were CEOs, they were, they were lawyers, they were law enforcement. They weren't the average, you know, like me, a retired RN for forty-five years' experience. They, they weren't. It wasn't quite the same, in my view, as having, having people from the community.
Yvonne, when, I tend to disagree with you. We had Branford Brown. We have a whole list of the people that were there.
Yes, and he was an attorney, too.
Yeah, but he was also representative, yeah, he, not only does he know the system, at the time, he was representing the Urban League, which is of the community, so.
And he worked at Legal Aid.
I, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, when we, when we, when those people were chosen, there was thought, thought, a lot of thought behind it. The people that worked most with the jail.
Right, but he didn't work in an ER
No.
with these same people.
Right.
Before, during, and after incarceration, you know, so.
Exactly.
There's a little bit that could be, have been at it, but I'm, I'm not here to, I'm just here to state my position and I would like to ask that you think about including the, the public a little more. And I know these are people that live in the community. They're community members, but, but they're not. I don't know how to describe it. They're, they're in positions, and they're fine. I'm not disputing that, but just add a few public, community members. And allow us to come to press conferences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things that was talked about was treating men and women that come into the jail. And, because when they come in, we don't know what medications they're on. They usually don't know. Well, it's something for depression, but they don't know what it is, right? So that's it, and I'm not saying Navcare right or wrong. And, and what you said is, we do have great employees, and they are going to have to grow that with that many beds, but one of the things that this GADAH group and everybody looked at was, how can we get the records and how can we know what those people need? And so we're very hopeful about that. We're also very hopeful that the state has to give a waiver, but the federal government has said, well, Ohio, you're an expanded, you're a Medicaid expanded state, and therefore we can use Medicaid dollars to treat people that are in the jail. So that's, that's brewing. It should happen very soon. The state just has to say to the feds, okay, we want, we will do that. So that'll be big as far as treating people, but I think that the technology that, those next steps that we need that are gonna be all part of what Tyler's putting out on Friday, to, to be able, when people come in, we'll know this is, this is how Kettering treated them in the past, or this is how one fifteen treated them in the past. And then we won't have that time period, because, believe me, I know this, Dennis, my husband, criminal defense attorney, and I can't tell you how many, right now, he's got nine people, I think, in the jail. And when they have mental health issues, they're just lost. And that's not to blame Navcare or anybody else. It's because we don't, we, as jail, don't have their background information. You know, people don't come in, well, here's my medications, and this is what I need. So we are very hopeful that this is gonna work, guys, and, and I, you know, we want you to be supportive. And I appreciate that you're supportive of this step. And we'll just see, we'll be positive and know that the next steps are gonna be the right thing to do. So one more person, Joel, Joel Prouse, come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Joel Prouse. I live at two thirty-two Park Drive in Dayton. I teach and work at UD, and I'm a, a member of the Montgomery County Jail Coalition. The first thing that strikes me is how anyone could have listened to my colleague Destiny speak and called her angry.
I didn't call Destiny angry. You guys have been angry with us in the past.
She spoke eloquently and calmly, and you said she was angry.
No, I didn't say.
So that's the first thing. This is my time.
Okay. You can have an extra minute.
I appreciate that. I mean, the other thing is, like, we're just playing games here, you know? And I know that you know that, right? Like, I had coffee with Rabbi Barsky earlier this year, and I said, you know, they say that the Justice Committee is their example of public input. And he chuckled because he said, not only was that not our charge, but it wasn't our process. And the Justice Committee report, it's like on page three, they tried to do even interviews with re-entering citizens. They ended up with eleven interviews, and they were anecdotal at best. That's what it says in the Justice Committee report, that you tout as authoritative in this space. Okay, so let's stop playing games about the fact that any part of this process over the last six years has involved people who live in this community, particularly people who are impacted by the system. They know the inside of the system, in fact, better than the sheriff does, and they know what's wrong with it, and they know how to fix it. But we don't engage impacted people, right? We discard them as best as we can. And in terms of doing anything by committee, it's called democracy. The idea that this body can authorize a twenty million dollar expenditure without any public input, despite the fact that I have in writing emails that you are all CC'd on when you said, when we have a plan, we will have public input, we will gather public input. Kevin Lavoy, is that his name, is in your comms team? I looked over those emails. You've said it on recordings. Like, can we stop playing games, please? And actually, like, try to do this together? We've asked for so many years to be included, for this to be a broad public topic. All the ARPA money that came in, there was no public engagement in terms of how to spend that money. The city did that. You hide your meetings on Tuesday afternoon at one thirty when no working people can come here. You could do that after work hours, and you might actually have more public engagement. So the by-committee that is so alarming to you, that is literally what we do here in a democracy, is we have public input that doesn't stop and start at elections. Civic engagement has to be continuous, right? And the rest of us, we do this on a voluntary basis. I have to leave work to come here, and I gotta make up work later. You know, I don't do this for a living, but I have to get out of my workday just to try to participate in my government because the decisions that are being made here are contrary not only to my values but to evidence. Okay, the sheriff at the press conference said, the first time people get care often is in the jail. We could change that by building out community-based infrastructure. The Coalition's been calling for that for three years. And the investments we have made in places like SANEES and the Crisis Response Unit and all those things that are coming online, what if those work? And what if we could spend the ARPA money and the opioid settlement money to expand those community-based services? So those people never end up in the jail. We could actually treat the root causes rather than treating the symptoms. And the idea that Navcare was involved in every step of this process and serves to benefit from the size of the contract is corrupt. It is crooked. It is straight crooked. And you hid this from everybody for all these months, and then Navcare is sitting there introducing, you know, themselves as a player here? You know, they are responsible for deaths and negligence and deception across the country, including in this county. Sasha Garvin in twenty seventeen called out for Navcare help for days when she was suffering from an impacted bowel, and the sheriff said she died of an overdose. She did not die of an overdose. Navcare is paying out overcharges and negligence and death across this country, and now their contract presumably is gonna grow. They're already on, we're on the hook for thirteen million dollars a year. The number we still haven't heard is, what is this gonna be the size of the Navcare contract moving forward? I would like an answer to that question at least. Thank you for your time. I'm good. Is it okay if I stand?
No, you should be seated. Your time is up. Thank you.
Are there any more to speak, commissioners?
You guys speak.
Thank you. Okay. It is imperative if this is process is gonna continue, that we stay in a fact-based world because that is important as your level in accusations that just flat out aren't true. The Justice Committee did spend two years, and they were of the public, not just of any one community group, but of the entire county. We selected people that were from all walks of life, from across the county. And they spent two years, and not only in that two years that they provide a tangible report, a blueprint of which we should work from, but we bolstered that with a consultant, CGL, to help the Justice Committee in the areas that they weren't sure about. From that report, which is public and which is posted online, we also went to HDR. And we posted the HDR report a week after we briefed the county commissioners. So these accusations of corruption, transparent, lack of transparency, having meetings that aren't in the public, just flat out aren't true. And I think you're using these things as buzzwords. And I just, I'm not gonna let that rest because it's just not true. You, you, not just you, but everyone in Montgomery County, all citizens, had an opportunity to download the HDR report a week after it was presented to the Board of County Commissioners, one week later. You all had an opportunity, and we have made it clear that we're not gonna just focus with one group or another group, that we want all of our citizens to be informed. Now, we went to the Behavioral Health Task Force because we wanted to hear from the providers of healthcare directly. These were not CEOs or some bigwigs. These were nurses and doctors and people that serve people in behavioral health. We wanted to get their feedback, and we wanted to know how they felt about the system. We wanted to know about the data. We wanted to know about the ability of people going through multiple doors. There was no secrecy there. They were all health providers. And we added probate and sheriff because the systems are interchanged. They're intertwined. Probate court judges using the pink slip process to mandate medicines or care, and the sheriff being a lot of times the first responders in a behavioral health episodic event. As far as the next steps, we have moved the next steps now, as the commissioners have mentioned, and as we've moved to RFP, RFQ. on the resolution, so that we can get a design for the new unit. We have been doing this now for six years. We have the resources to move forward. We need to get to design, and we need to get the unit up and running. Nobody disputes that. As far as Navcare being the, the new boogeyman, we need Navcare. Navcare is providing, the men and women of Navcare are providing behavior health, physical health, mental health services in the jail. That is the fact. Yvonne, you mentioned residencies. We've got two psychiatric residencies going on right now, and we are increasing that to four. We don't have three nurses. We have six nurses per shift. So it is important, as we lay out these things, in that when you come to the podium and address the commission, or you wanna talk in the media, at a minimum, at least state the facts. There is nothing untransparent about putting the reports on the website, so everyone can see it. There's nothing untransparent about letting everyone in the public, not just one group, but everyone know what is going on. Through the next steps of this process, we will go to design. Those designs will be posted to the website. The next step after design will be to select a design through a competitive process, and then we will go into a construction phase. All of this will move, but as commissioners have said, we can't do this through a committee. We've got to move on these things. After six years, we've got to make decisions to move forward. We can't start all over again, because now we have a whole new group of people that say, well, you, everything that you did six years ago doesn't matter, or none of those people were of the community. We've got to stay realistic and factually based in order to get this done. We've gotta give the sheriff and Navcare the tools that they need to treat people. And that is the humane thing that everyone is trying to do. We have got to create a therapeutic environment in the jail, and that is what we are trying to do. So to the commissioners' point, work with us on this. There's nobody trying to do anything here nefarious. But at the same time, you can't make accusations that just aren't based in fact, and say they're true. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Michael. Michael, do you have comments besides that?
Yes, commissioners, I wanted to remind everyone, thank you, that, um, Montgomery County Fall Job Fair is tomorrow, and this is huge. This is one of our largest job fairs, from 12 to 4, Dayton Convention Center. Uh, we've got 200 employers that have registered. Uh, most of them will be hiring on the spot. Uh, so it, it is critically important. We've got 400 people, commissioners, registered and ready to, signed up. Uh, the first 600 parking is paid for. Uh, if you don't have a resume, and you're not, don't feel like you're ready, please come down anyway. Our team will help you with your resume, and our team will get you moving and try to get you employed. So please, uh, anyone out there that's looking for work, please come to the Dayton Convention Center tomorrow, uh, from 12 to 4. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Yeah, that's always a real good one.
Yeah.
We have so many people looking for employees, and, um, there's, there's great opportunity.
And the hiring on the spot is huge. You could get a job right then.
Well, September has been, um, National Recovery Month, and, uh, last night, at the Family Treatment Court, uh, picnic at the Haynes Center, Family Treatment Court, um, they had a, a nice event, and they, our Treatment Court is a wonderful pathway for parents to, in recovery, to regain custody of their children. You know, for whatever reason, that they're in recovery, um, they still love their children. And 30 program alumni were there last night, along with many of their family members and friends. And the goal of the Family Treatment Court is to help parents see that they can overcome their addiction, to be happier, healthier, a happy, happier and healthier version of themselves while parenting through a sober lens. And so our Family Treatment Court provides customized support to our participants, and it connects them with the opportunities that are in our community, multiple treatment options faster, and it provides trauma-informed care for both parents and children. You know, oftentimes, people don't even realize the trauma they've been through, and, um, both the parents and the children. So that trauma-informed care is so important, and these events can help connect them to the resources to assist with housing, utilities, daycare, and transportation. We, through that process, we can reduce the number of days that children are in out-of-home care, and increase the number of children who are able to remain in their homes. So, um, it also helps the parents with those barriers that are out there for treatment, for working. So, um, congratulations to our whole team. Jerry, thank you. Um, and I, I'm sure it was a great event.
It was, yeah.
It was.
Very nice, very nice.
Sorry, I was done before, and I, yeah.
So September, just a few days left in September, it's National Food Bank Month. And I attended an event at our food bank last Thursday to celebrate the fourth anniversary of the composting program. It's a great way to combat food waste. Residents can purchase a subscription and bring a bucket of food waste to the food bank, and it is turned into nutrient-rich compost.
That's great.
You know, it was great to see so many people from the sustainability community there. Some people don't realize that the food bank has raised four, has raised 40 gar, 40 gardens there to help feed our community. They also offer tours of their hydroponic greenhouse, which produces 1,200 heads of lettuce per week for food insecure families. So it's a pleasure to be there to see that, uh, Thursday, and thank heavens for the food bank under the leadership of Michelle Riley and her great team.
Absolutely. And to wrap it all up, uh, we don't have a dog here today, but I'm gonna talk about the Animal Resource Center. Um, I think Steve mentioned it last week, that they are going to, uh, continue to offer the $10 microchip offer, and it's actually going to be through the whole licensing season, so I think he said like a month, but it's actually gonna be through January 31st. And, uh, normally, uh, the ARC charges $25, uh, for a microchip, but even at $25, I guess compared to going to a vet's office or another place, it's usually $50, so $10 is quite the deal. Um, so if anyone is interested in taking advantage of the offer, they should just stop by, um, the Animal Resource Center, Monday through Friday, 10 to 6, or on Saturday, 10 to 4, and they'll take care of everything. Uh, you don't need an appointment, just come when it's convenient. And they will also, which you might not get normally, is they'll, um, take care of registering the microchip for you. Um, I guess it can be sometimes a confusing process for people. And if you got your, um, animal chipped, but you have wrong information, it's not gonna work. And it's also available for cats. So if you're, um, a cat person, and you want your cat chipped, uh, you can take advantage of that as well. So dogs and cats, uh, through January 31st can get $10 microchips, so you never lose them.
You know, and you brought up a good point. You hear story after story about, well, they were chipped, but we don't know where the people are. And that, it's important to keep up with that. I know my, my kid up in Alaska, I said, you make sure that they know exactly where you are with your dog and your cat, so...
In doing care, Zach, commissioners, you all gave readers to the jurisdictions.
We did.
Which is great. So hopefully, they never make it to the ARC.
Yes.
They make it home.
Well, and, and on top of that, we have to thank our, um, our different foster groups that are out there, and the foster parents. Again, every week, we're gonna call you out. But we need more foster parents for, we need more foster parents in, for children, but we also need them for dogs, so... Well, thanks, everybody. Um, it was an interesting one, and, um...
I'll move to adjourn.
Yeah, we'll be here next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, October 3rd. What the heck. I second that.
All right, I'll third it. All this one favor.
Aye. Have a fantastic week.
She did.